I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 18th, 2020 meetings.
Make a motion.
Thanks Vance. Thanks Joe. Any discussions, corrections?
Nope, none.
Tammy!
I even searched and searched the titles. Nicely done.
Yes, no hearing done. All in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Well, I'm sorry.
That's abstained. And that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 9th, 2020 public hearing related to the equipment trust funds. And the facilities trust funds.
Make a motion.
Thank you Vance.
I'll say it.
Thank you Joe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Abstained.
And that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
None.
Business administrators report?
Yeah, just have the man that needs to be signed for this week and also a couple more infrastructure dance that I need all the signatures. And we did, we had applied for a dishwasher grant back in September. And we just heard that we got the money for the dishwasher, which is great because that's been on our plan for a while. So we got about $11,000 and we're working with Jack and Mark and Brian to look at.
Great.
Replace with business.
Do we have any questions for Deb? Superintendent's report, Judy.
Uh, well, you did have a memo in your last packet, so I'm not gonna go through everything, but the action items, but tonight, one of the action items will be to, you know, be voting on the list of policies, there's a lot of them obviously, so you can see though. Um, the other is, is that we did have a facilities committee meeting and Brian will be reviewing the next steps and recommendations for the piping project.
Okay. And Mark, the principal was report?
Again, you have a copy in the packet, but I just wanted to spend a while since I've updated you on any kind of numbers. Uh, we have 285 kids in the school presently, um, you know, since the beginning of the year, that's 25 new students. And we're currently doing 21 kids remote. Um, and we are expecting a few new students after the beginning of the year. Other than that, we're, we just keep on, keep it on. We're doing a good job.
Anybody have any questions for Mark? Committee reports. I guess we'll start with policies or quite a few first readings. I don't know if you want to address them or if there's anything in particular.
No, you know, I don't know if there's necessarily anything particular. I would just note some of the policies. You'll see minor revisions, others are wholesale, adoption of new policies. I think everything in here that we, that we are adopting wholesale, that we didn't have a policy before, something that's required by statute, so it's not, we're not going out on a limb, so. If there's any questions, then we have an answer.
I just want to comment that the minutes of the policy meeting prior to looking at all the policies was awesome.
Yes.
They answered all my questions before I even asked them, so that was helpful.
Also, what's, what's happening is, is what we're doing now with the policies and when you have your, you know, we have the policies that we're going to move forward with, but also you'll notice there'll be some that could say to be withdrawn.
Right.
Those will be voted on as well, so we can just have it in the record that the board voted to withdraw it. But all of the ones that are withdrawn are already encompassed in other policies.
Right.
Right, so part of that effort is just to clean up old policies that are no longer being used or have been overwritten, overwritten by newer, more updated stuff. Or, I think, and then the medical release one, that one we're getting rid of because it's an outdated, it's basically a form and it's an outdated version that's not really being used. And for that process and that information collected in that form is not being done upon enrollment, so it's no longer.
Do you want a motion to move these on the second meeting?
Yeah, I can, I can make the motion.
Go for it.
Basically, uh, I would move the, the board move BDC, EB, CG, EFR, JJE, JLC, JLCD, JLCDR, JLCE, and JLDBB as amended to a second meeting.
A second.
Thank you Tammy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
And I would also move that EBBC, JLCAA. Well, you'll see that that policy has three names, it's just in three different places, so it's actually three policies that are being pulled, but it's all the exact same policy, just in three different locations. So JLCAA, GB, GAA, IHAMC, and JLCOR, move those all to be withdrawn.
A second.
Thank you Tammy.
Do you want to withdraw those prior to moving the others?
Um, yeah, I think those are, I don't believe that those are related to any of the new ones.
Okay.
Or actually, they may.
Want to wait until second meeting to do that?
Uh, yeah, that may make sense to do that.
I'll wait till my second?
That probably makes sense to do that. Well, I made the motion and didn't get a second, so we'll just wait. I'll make another motion once the other ones are approved for the next meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Brian, facilities.
Hi guys. So, the main thing we needed to discuss today was moving forward with the piping and tank plan that we had discussed in the past and we had left the money in. Sorry, I'm screwing away. I had an email, it was really nice. Basically, we got our information back from the questions that we had asked, you know, we had posed the question on can we hold off on doing the project as we get closer to, you know, bringing this back to an article this year in front of the people because we had to hold off on it last year, but we did save that $80,000 for that project. We had asked administration to reach out to Robert Bishop and find out what the, you know, is this gonna hold us up, is the statement still be coming after us and so on and so forth. Robert Bishop did send out a, a long email pertaining to that subject. The administration chose to have Wayne Philly and just read it to have somebody, you know, interpret it, and his feeling is that we move forward with the project that the state is, is gonna expect that.
So the repairing, the repairing of the piping project.
The piping and the tanks.
Yeah.
So for that, it's just, it's mainly just getting everybody just in okay eye.
The piping and the tank, just the piping?
It's just the piping. The project's just the piping, right?
It's repairing now.
The piping, yeah.
Repairing the piping now.
And then putting like sensor, like.
Yeah, yeah.
No different than what it was before. That then did, so that as far as moving forward, they can start bidding, they could put it out to bid tomorrow essentially, like or this week and start getting numbers. The state does have people that they work with, so they, you know, that they suggested that they've used in the past, you know, even though it does have to let the bid, they'll be included in those bids. And once the approval takes place, they can start as early as January. The only question I had in respect to that was, you know, are we gonna have heat during this project? And they'll just bring in, you know, a remote tank, you know, run of bypasses and, and nothing will happen, it's just a quick, you know, fix. What that does open up and that we discussed today. I'm not really, I've had surgery, so I'm a little out of it and when I, I can't really focus on much. But I lost that information too, so.
You want me to do it?
Nope, I got it. Okay, so, um, you know, there was a suggestion based on this to, to say, um, and this is where, you know, it's I guess a vote from the board, it's above my decision. Suggested to me at that point was to just repair an AC syst, like add an AC system, do a control upgrade, which was included in our big project in the past. And to move forward with the heating system as it sits. So this is where I, I have a tough time. This has been, something that has been discussed has needed to get done for the last, you know, six years, I'm saying at least four years. A lot of time has been put into this project and because now the oil is, is okay to use, running with the same system to me doesn't seem to make much sense. I know there's a savings of money. You know, my feeling is still moving forward. Unfortunately, because of fines and, and stuff like that and time that it took, you know, we've had, we have to complete this piping project, but I don't think it should stop the overall project of replacing our heating system. I think she handed out a list of everybody has in front of you, kind of the original cost of the heating system. Now, the only, so I, I personally would, you know, I think that we go forward with the heating system and not find out down the road that by doing this, we made a mistake. And we chose not to do a heating system because now again, we just band-aided the system by fixing the oil tank, we didn't even fix what we were intending to fix from the beginning. However, this, this proposal was based off of building a propane system and basically shutting down the oil system because it was going to be shut down and that would have been a savings of $80,000 versus this. My only suggestion, I guess, that I've come up with is potentially, if you look at the top items, number two through four, they are specifically directed towards a propane system because we would have had to build site work, concrete work, some of the form work, and then even on top of that, another potential, you know, $23,000 or so if we chose to purchase our own tanks or the leasing option and so on and so forth. I would like to see us go forward in replacing the heating system. What I kind of think we should do, and I suggested was, since now the oil is, will be up to snuff, is maybe see if we can recoup some of that difference in cost by saying to Wayne, if we went, since the oil now is fixed, what if we just did, what's the difference in going to like an oil burning system? You know, is it comparable in price and then we save on all of the site work, the concrete and the masonry, but we have an updated system and we add in the AC and the controls, but it's all new. Or he might just say, there's not gonna be a price difference and maybe we stay there and there, there's a loss taken and I think you gotta, I think the loss has to be accepted due to the time that it took to accomplish the project. You know, um, so I mean, it's a lot to swallow and I just wanted to get some feedback on, on kind of like what you guys' thoughts are, because I really would hate to see this project not happen. And then five years down the road, what I think we've been building towards was replacing the system and we find out that the system, the boiler needs to go and we're right where we are, we're five years down the road and we're closer to the other one up the hill, and how does that all, all work out? If this, if, I guess it is, if we're not gonna replace the system, why didn't we just replace the pipe six years ago?
So where, I mean, my, my opinion is we're already five years down the road plus. If we, you know, if we're gonna fix the piping, it would make sense to me if there's, if we can recover that cost plus some by sticking with oil and getting a new oil burner, AC and controls, then that's, that's the direction we go instead of switching over to LP. I mean, that, that just would make sense to me. The, the tank's not an issue. This whole thing started with replacing the entire system, the burner and everything.
Exactly.
So to, to just now try to save some money by just putting the controls in and, and piecemealing it back together, to me doesn't make sense when we've come this far. The only change is from what we were talking about last year to this year is maybe we stick with oil to recover the cost of what we had spent for the piping.
That, that's the way I'm looking at it. If Wayne can say that the boiler and, and running an oil furnace is gonna be just as efficient, right now the costs are fine, and it's gonna be offset by not having to do all this site work and this extra propane stuff and it's basically just, because the rest of it, the mechanicals are relatively similar. You know, if that makes sense and presented in that respect.
I have a question. Right, you said right now the tanks are not an issue, however, they're the same age as the pipes that have failed and we need to replace. So when are the tanks gonna become an issue? Are they gonna last us another year or two or three, or are they gonna last us another 30?
I mean, we were told, I mean, it could last 30, 40 more years, it could be two years, we just have to monitor more, that there's gonna be more requirements and annual monitoring and that sort of thing.
The piping that's in there didn't fail, they required an upgrade.
Right.
The state, they changed the laws and required double wall piping instead of single piping, and they did not fail.
Yeah, we haven't had any like issue, we're, we're not like leaching into the soil.
So those tanks could last forever.
Could last forever. And that's why we just have to get a better system of monitoring. So in addition to the pipes, there's a monitoring system that's a little more today.
Yeah. I had asked this question to Wayne Philly and he said the typical lifespan of the tank is 20 years, ours are 30 years old, so.
So we should replace the tanks if we're gonna go this way?
Well, that's a pretty extensive question.
Yeah, I mean, the, I think that we need to be aware that we have, you know, 30-year-old underground storage tanks, those things do not last forever, they're eventually gonna have to be replaced and it's not gonna be cheap when that happens. So whether we do that now or we do that at some point down the road, I guess is sort of, a, a decision needs to be made, but I, I wouldn't, I was, in reading the letter that we got from the state, they suggested the possibility of just supplying our system with temporary tanks and it sounds like that's what the plan is when they do the repairs anyway, right? So is it a possibility where we could still move forward with the, the project as it was proposed, using LP and doing all of the upgrades to the system? Because my understanding, from my, my recollection of what Wayne told us was that the, the oil equipment is a little cheaper, the boiler and the equipment's a little cheaper, but the, it's less, yeah, it's more maintenance and it's less efficient. So, you know, there is some, some differences in BTUs per gallon and the cost of oil versus propane, but when we asked Wayne, you know, what is our best bang for our buck, you know, he said to go with propane, so that was, you know, part of what we were asking to do was give us the, give us, give us the analysis on what's gonna be the best financially for us and the, the propane was it, so. I'm, I'm hesitant to just, you know, sort of go back to the, to the old ways and if, and if we could just have somebody come in and install a temporary tank until we, until we get a thumbs up or thumbs down on the project. You know, because I also have a, I have the feeling that if we, if we say, well, you know, we're gonna, we scrap the old $30,000 engineering that we did for, that we had you do for this other project and wanna go back to oil, that's not gonna be free, we're gonna have to pay for that, probably not gonna be a full redo, but there's gonna be some cost to us for him to re-engineer the system to the oil and using the old, the old tanks and everything, so.
I, I agree. I mean, here's, here's where I stand, and I'm kind of, like, is, I would present our article the way we did in the past. The idea about the oil thing was more to, it's asking questions, you think that makes it palatable? I mean, I think we did this, like you said, I look at it as a loss because it, that happens. You know, some, if you did the project, sometimes you gotta take the hit. Or maybe there was an option to do like this other tank, but I don't think, you know, I would realistically like to see the project going the way that we spent all this time on.
So then do we know what it, what the cost would be roughly to have a temporary tank until we have that vote?
No.
Well, temporary tank, you have to, and we're not with.
I think you still gotta do the piping.
Yeah, well, you do, because without, with no intention of using that original tank that's in there, then you've gotta do the shutdown process.
So we've gotta do the piping regardless?
The piping has to get done.
Well, I mean, it, it's decommissioning like we were gonna do.
Yes.
Which is part of the, which is part of what we had proposed, is part of that project anyway. So the decommissioning of the oil system was all sort of figured into the, to the original proposal and to the original amount of money that we had.
But we have to get from January to a vote to July to get the project done.
Right, and I think.
So what's, what, what cost us the less, least amount of money to do that, is what I'm.
How much, how much of the fine do we have to pay?
Well, this is, yeah, so, okay, so now I liken this to doing something at your own house.
Oh, 'cause it says 10% of what the, we have to pay 10%.
We haven't been told what the potential fine is, right? $1,000 a month, is what the letter said.
So, retro.
If we don't fix this thing by January, they're gonna start levying that.
Well, this is the thing, so now you take that and I likened it to being at my house. If it was at my house, it's, alright, I'll take a gamble on it and I'll put it off to the side, 'cause I'm gonna spend four grand to save 74. If it doesn't pass this, then we're down the road and still in a lot of, we're even deeper, you know? I don't, in that's where.
We still have 80 grand in the budget till June to fix it, possibly.
I guess it comes down to then, I mean, what is it then that, I mean, it's, it's out of, my suggestion is doing the oil, doing, doing the piping and still presenting this, that's where I'm at. And then I think.
We don't have a choice in doing the piping.
Yeah, so let's just do that.
We have to do the piping, it's gonna be done January 2021, and then we decide if we wanna present this or not, but that has to be done, I don't think that's an issue, that's not a question. That's gotta go forward, we've gotta let Judith put it out to bid now, we don't have to, that's not even a discussion. Now you move on to the next phase, what do you wanna do after that?
I think there's a second option, which is to have, rather than spending $8,000 to do the piping, spend a couple thousand dollars to have temporary tanks installed.
Still have to do the pipes?
No, not necessarily. Because the pipes, if we're not using them and we drain, and we drain them, that was his suggestion in the, in the letter, was decom, like basically drain the pipes.
So what's the cost of decommissioning that system?
And, great, well, ultimately, I think it was pretty significant cost of removing the tanks and pipes, but that was all part of this system to begin with, so.
So you're, but you're assuming that this is gonna pass?
Well, right, I think that, I mean, we sort of have to assume that it's going to pass at this point.
Hey, I'm gonna be the jerk in the back of the room because I wasn't, haven't been discussing this with you for six years. And everybody, not everybody, but a lot of townspeople sit back and think, we're replacing an almost 30-year-old system and we have a pushing 60-year-old system that we're not even talking about. It doesn't make sense to me.
But if we do fix that tank up there anyway, I mean, we could always go back to the dual fuels too, because now you have a working.
Well, I'm not, I really am not going backwards anymore. In that, you, I would fight hardline, this is, will we end on this? It has to. It, it's been dual fuel, it's been wood, it's been.
Well, no, I'm saying, you'd already have a working oil system.
It's been gasoline, it's been everything, man. It, and, and I've been through them all and they were all a great idea until somebody else got replaced and then that was a stupid idea. And then the new person came up with an idea and that was great until he left and then he was like, that was a dumb idea. Well, we, we've taken the engineer's ideas, this is the engineer's plan, moving forward, we can't adjust this plan, all we can do is come up with a way to spend the money in a leverageable way to make sense, but we can't, I, I don't want, we're not at the point where we can go and redesign this anymore, in this, in my opinion, we can.
Do the ones that are, do the ones that are tanks feed both schools?
No.
No, for this one's self-contained.
And this one, I believe, has the upgrades.
Yeah, this is a composite.
Running a, for both schools was out of our price.
Right, we looked at that. So why are we replacing the almost 30-year-old burner and not the 60-year-old burner? Because we had the tank, we had the piping issue. So the piping issue fueled it, period?
Yes.
So we spent the $80,000 fixing piping, then we can figure out how to replace the older system first. So the piping system, replacing, doing the 80,000 or less of piping and fixing that issue spurred on a half a million dollar burner system.
We still need $200,000 or 180 to, for the control units and stuff and the AC and that, that still needs to get done, we, we can't, we can't skip that. But, whatever, I, I mean, I guess I just, I'm gonna ask that Judy goes forward and moves forward with the oil at this point. As far as the rest of it, to be honest, I'm.
I mean, we have to fix the piping, I agree.
I'm pounding my head off the wall, that's been going on for, for years now and they were all stupid ideas then and they're still stupid ideas now, but we, we asked an engineer to come up with a plan, he did, and, and that's where we are. So we can either, I guess going forward, decide whether or not we're gonna put the heating system onto the plan for this year or we're just scrapping. And that's a call that I guess has to just get voted on and you say we're gonna go forward or we're not gonna go forward. I agree.
Can I make one suggestion potentially? I think it makes sense for us to start putting this up to bid, we've gotta do something, right? But can we also look into the cost of just doing a temporary oil delivery system for the few months in which we are waiting for an answer from the taxpayers on what we're gonna do, or a decision from the board plus an answer from the taxpayers, I guess, on what we're gonna do part in the long term up there?
Why do we need to pay them?
We don't need a temporary system, they're gonna put an oil tank in like three weeks.
Because, I mean, the point is, rather than spend 80 grand on an oil system and then put to the taxpayers a propane system three months down the road after spending 80 grand on the oil system, spend $2,000 or $3,000 on a temporary system until we can get our other one up and running. It's a, it's a stopgap.
And then if it fails, you can fix the pipes.
And not fix the pipes.
Right, and, and then if, if it doesn't pass voters or if we decide not to put it to voters, then.
DES was very clear in their letter that said you have till January 2021 to fix these pipes, it's been.
No, no, they, they also gave the option that Jay's.
They specifically gave us the option of.
They gave three or four options.
Doing a temporary system to feed it and just not using the pipes. So that's one of the things that they suggested that we could do, it's say, it's, it would be a stopgap until we get a final answer on what we're gonna do up there, and if the answer is spend 80 grand and fix the pipes and just let the system ride for another however many years we can squeeze out of it, then we can spend the money we have, that we already have allocated until, what, June, you said?
So why don't we just dual-track this, get, start the bidding process and then find out what the cost is to override the system with temporary tanks?
Do we need to vote on that? I don't, I don't think so, I mean, we don't need to vote that because that's already in the budget to, from last time and then when we.
Do we have another meeting in December?
No.
Then I think we need to make the decision to do that, right now.
Well, that's what she's doing, she's.
But not just to fight out the cost, but to get it implemented. We have until Jan, we have until next month to fix the piping system. January 2021 is very clear, and if we're not gonna fix it by January 2021, we need to bypass it. By January 2021, we don't meet again until January of 2021. So I would make a motion that we move to bypass the piping system with a temporary system and drain that pipe and not use it and not fix it right now until we decide and can come up with a plan for district meeting in March. That's my motion.
Do you want the email in front of you from Bob Bishop? I don't really. My only concern with that, Tammy, we don't know what the cost of the bypass of the temporary system is.
I bet it's less than $80,000.
I mean, sure.
We had something lined up.
Well, I must have made this email.
Told them, they're coming in February 1st, we'll pay you that.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, I think as long as we had something lined up, let's say they couldn't make it till February 1st, but we had that date.
They'd be okay. That's still not, that leaves us a month and a half, less.
I know, it's not too much time.
Right, I mean, you, you brought us two weeks with that, it doesn't.
And do we have the, the actual $80,000 bid?
It's in our budget, it's in our budget.
No, I know we have the money, but do we have the actual bid that says that's what it's gonna cost?
It's probably, it's probably gonna be less than that.
It's gonna be less than. Wayne said it's gonna cost about 60, but he would put it at 80 just in case.
Yeah.
That was just at his estimate.
Yeah, but they updated all the plans, that's what we're waiting for all summer, so they updated everything, the engine, whatever.
And now that the ground's ready, I mean, it's gonna be probably closer to the 80 than 60.
I guess to address your concern, is it possible to just give, delegate that decision to the administration once those numbers come in to make a decision about what makes financial sense to do? I mean, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, if it's something where the board feels strong with, they wanna have another vote, we could, we could do it, we could do a Zoom vote. We could do an emergency meeting and have.
With 24 hours, it's not even an emergency meeting. It's a legitimate meeting with 24 hours notice.
That sounds good, I mean, you know, it's.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, I think it makes sense to look into.
It's gonna happen by January.
No, regardless, so.
My concern, my only concern about this project.
I just think Bob needs to know that we're doing it.
Yeah, yes.
Right, right, and my only concern is, is that this has been going. Right, and my only concern is, is that this has been going on since 2016.
Exactly.
And all options have been looked at and reviewed.
I, the only thing that, I, I mean, I can't-
I think that's a discussion for another night, though.
The next motion that's gonna come is whether we're putting this on the warrant or not. As it is, as it sits, we have, we have explored every possible option. So, and this is what we've come up with after four or five years, or however long it's been. And then we can vote it down, or we can vote to move forward. And it's that, it's gonna be what it's gonna be, so. All right.
I just have a resignation.
Okay.
So we, we left that as Judy's gonna look into prices, and then get back to us, and we're gonna have a quick Zoom meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Isn't that what we just, yeah.
Thank you. I was confused with everything going around.
Okay, I'd like to recommend the board to accept the resignation of Jeanette Fekto.
No.
Make the argument.
I'll make the motion, I'll second it, we'll be ready.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, not motion carries.
That is a buck.
We still need to go into non-public. Uh, we have the MOU ratification.
Yes. The MOU ratification is, uh, you, everyone received a copy of the memorandum of agreement.
In, in the package?
No, just passed it out.
You just passed it out?
This memorandum, memorandum of agreement was for the, uh, it correlates with the plan, the COVID plan that we have already in place. All of these items correlate with the COVID plan. So the teachers got together, the administration got together, and there was, you know, due to the changes in working conditions, they came up with, both parties came up with this memorandum of agreement. Both parties signed.
I make a motion to, to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Linwood Cooperative School Board and the Linwood Education Association.
I'll second, and then can I request a minute to adjourn, you want?
Any cost items related?
No.
Thank you.
Question?
No.
I just had one question. We have in here, um, that somebody, uh, has answered yes to any of the questions, uh, for the screening, that they're out for fourteen days. We've received some updated guidance from the state on that, and they have reduced that in certain circumstances. Are we, is it our intention to just sort of allow them to go by the updated guidance? Or is it still, does this source still have, you know, fourteen days?
Yes, then that was also discussed. As the plan changes, and as the district's plan change, this, this will, they'll go along with the, with the plan.
So they'll be allowed to, I think it's ten days, or it would, or seven days in a test, or whatever.
Mm-hmm, right. And every time there is a change, we put it on the website, and we change it within the plan, and we also let, notify staff of the changes.
Any other questions? Hearing no further questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions. Thank you, Joe, and that motion carries. We do have to go into non-public briefly, right? Uh, before we do that, for new business, I just wanna talk about coming back from Christmas break and, uh, my personal feelings. I think, you know, when we, we, I think things have been going really well in the school, thanks to the administration. I think the kids have been doing a great job. You know, there were concerns around Thanksgiving, you know, of people gathering in large groups with families and leaving town, that sort of thing. I think we need to consider whether we wanna come back remote that first week, because I think in addition to large family gatherings, we're gonna have thousands of visitors to our town, and- I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think it makes, personally, I don't think it makes sense to, you know, for our town to clear up on Sunday, and then we're sending large groups back into the school. I mean, why not sit for a week, learn remotely, let it flush out and see what's what?
Thank you.
Yeah, as I say, we tend to speak out, that's the only microphone, so unfortunately, there's no way I can raise the volume. It's gonna have to be a directed, that's all.
Mike is telling me he couldn't hear us.
Yep, I know, I understand.
Is this for the school, or is this for the budget? Is that?
That's, this is-
Yeah, I can talk louder than that.
That's for the audience, the school board at the time.
So, so my thought is, I think in addition to, we know there's gonna be people that gather in larger groups than typically. I don't think there's-
Yeah, that's not how it works.
There's a-
I heard that too, though.
All right, okay, well, it's, it's actually, it's the meeting's in progress, so you can meet yourself, sir.
The meeting's in progress, and I'll be here to attend the meeting.
Uh, the meeting of the, uh, the Budget Committee, which we're still involved in, is a school board meeting, sir.
So anyway, my, my feeling is that, you know, the teachers can come back, work from school, you know, they're gonna be in their classroom. There's no, there's no risk with being in the building.
You're welcome to the students.
Yeah, just, just stay remote for the students and see what flushes out. I mean, a lot of these kids' families work in the industries that are gonna be frequented, um-
Does that include the partner program?
I would, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, however, we've done it in the past, just for that week, just to kind of let things settle and see what's what, and, um-
Well, in the past, the partner program had to be here for most of it, so.
We've not discussed this with the partner program yet.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. It's small cohort, even with athletics, it's a small cohort that's gonna be in at a specific time that you know who is here. I think that stuff could, could continue. I don't know that bringing back two hundred and eighty-five students on Monday after everybody just left town is the right thing to do.
I think it's a good idea. Mark, how do you feel on it?
I personally think that we've been going well, and we're dealing with situations as they arise, and I'd like to continue to deal with those as they arise. We've had people in, it's, we've had people in this town forever. I mean, we've come back here, we've had meetings, and we've said, we can't believe how many people are here this weekend, can't believe how many people are here this weekend. It's been going that way for a long time, and I realize ski season has started, and we do see a large number here again, but, personally, I, I think we're in school, kids expect to be in school, that's the message we've been giving them. When we had this little break between Thanksgiving and Christmas, well, I'm sorry, that Thanksgiving break, it, it went all right. It was a couple of days, and I know you're suggesting a week, it was a couple of days, but kids really wanted to be back here. Um, and I think as long as we're maintaining, knock on wood, we haven't had any positive cases in the building, and like you said, Matt, that a, a lot of the kids, they're doing their best as they can. Do I recognize people might be traveling? Yeah. We thought there was gonna be a big influx after Thanksgiving as well, and we didn't see that. I know the public is seeing a little bit more right now. I do think, all in all, looking at the vacation in itself, which spans, what, over, over ten days or so, probably, a little bit more, that, that is a good buffer as well. So I'm, I'm, my inkling is to just keep on keeping on. That's kind of what the motto is, and the kids expect to be here, they like to be here, and I, but I do understand what you're saying.
I would just suggest that I, you know, I just respectfully disagree. I think, you know, that the length of the Christmas break and the, it's, we're talking thousands of people coming to this town, not a couple hundred to go to their condo and get ready for ski season like they're doing Thanksgiving, or it was a little bit smaller this year. I mean, there's, there's gonna be thousands of people coming in. And, and I don't mean this sarcastically, and I, but, I mean, we, we have a two-hour delay tomorrow over snow that we don't even know if it's coming, you know? And we're, we know thousands of people are coming here over ten days, you know? I mean, we know that's gonna happen.
I agree with Aaron, Aaron on the side of the clock. We've come this far, and we're so close, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and it would just not be great if we screwed it all up now.
It's five days.
I mean, if we go one week remote to stay open, to stay open the rest of the year, and, and, I mean, it's, why not hush? Cut that two-hour delay just in case. It, it just makes sense.
That's the way I look at it. I mean, you know what, if, if, if the COVID numbers don't go up, then, you know what, we were still, it, it doesn't hurt us, but if, if something happens and, you know, kids start getting sick over the course of that week, and then we have to, we have to close things down longer, potentially.
Right.
Now, do you still have to say the partner program has to be here? Do they still have to run buses? Do they still have to do the cafeteria? Do they still have to do all that too? They do, okay.
But I, you know, I think we have enough time to, to set up for that.
Yeah, those logistics don't take much, you know? Buses, um, buses feeding the kids, that doesn't take much. There's only two, two and a half days. We do not have anything set up for feeding kids like we did this summer. Because remember this summer, it took us a little while, a couple of weeks-
Right.
-to get things in order as to if we, so if we extend, if we extend that time away, it's gonna take a while to figure out, you know, the, the food, the food situation.
Yeah.
So that is not then in place.
Yeah, that probably would not be in place if it was just for those five days.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could potentially look at, you know, pickups, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, like, we could do it like they did over the summer, or something like that, or where they came and, and picked up their meals.
Well, they didn't, we delivered over the summer.
That was interactive.
There was pick-
That was a separate pickup.
Oh, that was a separate, that was a separate. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine that there's not a way to figure out.
But schools have, you can pick up at the school, like a daily pickup, it would be a daily pickup of lunch or breakfast or whatever. That's what other schools do.
Yeah, that's what most schools do. Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's impossible, you know, to do that, to get that information, um, but-
I mean, I mean, huge pro, I want the kids in school, I want the kids playing sports, I want the kids doing everything that they usually do, but I think, I think this period of time in the middle of the winter, when things are surging, it just, it just makes sense to just bring the teachers back, let the kids stay out, and, and then just learn remotely for one week, and then hopefully let things flush themselves out. Anybody else have any opinions? Well, I'm gonna make a motion that, um, from January the fourth to January eighth, I believe, that the students of Linwood will be learning remotely.
January fourth through eighth, yes. I'll second it.
Thanks, Tammy.
Can I just throw one there, that can we please ask the partner program if they can go along with it, so that they're not releasing those?
I would leave it up to the discretion.
That's what, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's-
I said, that's why, I left it up to Judy. We have a contract, we may not be able to anyway, so that's-
No, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not suggesting keeping the building closed. I mean, I think, you know, the ski team can come and work out and study, you know?
No, I think it's all for everybody not to have to come, but just, the kids have to, I just, I don't-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't like that, so I'd, just like for them to be able to stay and do that, so.
One, one of the other things you need to think about, too, is not just the partner program, but the special ed program and running services with those kids.
Yes, just not-
We have been doing services, you know, online last time, but that happened, but that's cumbersome, and it's tough to plan, so, um, you know, we could potentially look at bringing special ed kids in the building as well. I, I think that would be, logistically, I think that would be a little hard, but, but it could be done if we need to do services in the building.
I mean, we've, we've done it all before.
Oh, it has been done before, but it's just, like, I just don't like the idea of single-ing those kids out. You have to go to school, but you guys don't type-
Well, everybody's going to school.
You know what I mean, yeah, but they've gotta get up and come in here. Everybody else doesn't. That's my point.
The difference of doing it in your jammies is not-
Yeah, right, right.
I just don't think they should be single though, but it's by contract, that's completely up to Judy to find out with that contract.
Whatever the contract is, they have to come, they have to come.
So I guess, since you put it to a motion, I just didn't realize we were, the intent was to to have the board force the issue tonight. Um, I would just add that I think we have a solid plan in place. I think the administration's been doing a great job administering that plan.
Yep, I agree.
Keeping the kids safe, and keeping the kids, um, here, and, and I think not many people would disagree that, that that's the best case for, for the community, for the kids, for the parents. So I, I would, I, I think, you know, I would caution making a decision like that, you know, in the vacuum. We're, we're several weeks out. We actually don't have any real good idea about how many people are gonna be coming, because Linwood is significantly restricted there, access unknown. Large number of restaurants aren't really opening to a certain degree. We have, you know, statewide closures, it could be getting tighter. And we're making the decision, um, in advance, and we don't really have a full, full scope of the situation at the time. And I understand being cautious, and I'm all for being cautious, I think I've been fairly clear about that throughout this, this process, but I think that we have a good plan in place, I think we can rely on that. And I would, I guess I would caution the board against, uh, make, trying to make this decision for the administration. We can trust that they're going to make the right decision, if they feel like we need to do that. If the numbers in our community get, get, you know, higher control, or higher than people are comfortable, then maybe that makes sense. But I think at this point, we're, we're sort of making it without having enough information, and, and making it, sort of circumventing the policy that we have in place that has worked fairly well for us so far, so. I would suggest sticking with the plan. Obviously, that's an option, if the administration feels like it's necessary, but I think I, I, I don't, I don't think I've been voting in favor of forcing that issue now, and so taking that, taking that out of the administration's hands, I think they're the most suited to make that decision in the back lines.
Anybody else before we vote?
When I listen to Jay, I, I also know that statistically, our, our kids are safest in school. But the longer they're at home, the more likely they are to be at risk. I think the school buildings are safest for them, and the learning is, and it's, we have some great teachers, and they do great remote instruction, but learning is best face-to-face, and I think if our numbers are low, it's, I know there's some thought to, you know, so we buffer, but we're doing a great job, like, I think I'm, I think I would vote no, not because I agree one way or the other, I'd rather the administration just talk about it, and they, they can make the call, but I, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we need to, I think I agree with Jay, I don't think we need to jump in on this, but it could be December twenty-eighth, and numbers have gone up, and you guys are able to decide to send this remote, I mean, that's an option too.
Yeah, I think, I think my, my suggestion is just to be proactive, so that there's a plan.
Yeah.
And it, and it has nothing to do with the cases that are gonna show up next week. It's, it's what's gonna happen the week after everybody leaves, and that's, that's my only, trying to be proactive for that, just in case. But we might as well just vote on it and, and go from there. So the, the motion in the second was to, uh, for students to learn remotely from January fourth through January eighth, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I think that, just me and Tammy. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay, so Brian, Joe, you were nay too?
Nay, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Jay advanced, okay. Thank you.
And just as a commentary to that, um, if you decide that you're not comfortable being in person, you absolutely have my full support to make that decision, and this is not a commentary on that. It's just, I think you, you folks are in the best position to make that decision when the time comes.
I, I definitely trust your decision. Try to draw votes.
So I would like to pull the board to go into non-public, uh, pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, full and three, discussion matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school. Vance?
Yep.
Tammy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I'm the A.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're muted. Can I stop camera too?
Are you sure we're muted?
Second?
You're sure we're muted?
We are fully muted, yes. I'll stop you.